For in the secretary and it's a good chat that for this period I will be the vice president of education. So let's learn together, grow together, and I'm sure by making sure that we appreciate every moment and stay active and involved in every meeting, all of us can for sure improve our leadership, communication, and public speaking skills. So congratulations for Magical Bali Toastmaster, happy anniversary. Thank you very much, back to you, President Batra.
Okay. So that is the Vice President of Education now is the Vice President of Membership. Well, this, at the moment, we still have this role back then, so therefore, I still open this position. I encourage all the members who want to contribute in the growth of the club. And also, if you want to learn the practical leadership of Toastmasters, this is a good chance. And you will get many things from being part of the Exco. So yeah, the position is still open. If you're interested, you can PM me. The next one is Vice President of Public Relation, and the candidate is John Manurum. Is there any objection to this? Okay.
No.
Yep. No. So congratulations to John Manurum for being the Vice President of Public Relation for Magical Bali Toastmasters from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Can you please give a short speech?
Okay, well, um, thank you for such a that's an honor for me because I can be PPPR and yeah, uh, let's grow together and thank you for the last PPPR, Seni, for support me and Melita, Miranda, all of the Exco, thank you for your support. Yeah, I will do my best. Happy anniversary, Magical Bali Toastmaster.
Hey, happy anniversary to us. That's the Vice President of Public Relation, and the next position is Secretary. So the candidate for Secretary is Yuliani. So is there any objection to this?
No.
No.
Okay, there's no objection, and since Yuliani cannot come today, cannot make it, there's a short video that she prepared, so let me play this video for you guys.
Maybe need to share the audio as well?
Oops, sorry for that glitch.
Hello, fellow Toastmasters. I wish that I could be in the meeting tonight, but sorry, I could not be there because I have to be in the hospital with my mom for her regular checkup. So in this opportunity, I want to first say thank you to Ajay for considering me for the Exco candidate position as Secretary. And after thinking on that positions and knowing the condition of myself, I'm thinking that I want to contribute more to the club and I can accept for that position. So hopefully, I can do my best on that role and contribute more to the club. Thank you. Hello, fellow.
Yeah, that's for the Secretary. Now let's move on to the next position. And the next position is Treasurer, and the candidate for Treasurer is Sylvia Zaputra. Is there any objection to this?
No.
No.
No, definitely no.
Definitely no. Okay, then the position is sold to Sylvia Zaputra. Congratulations, Sylvia Zaputra for being the Treasurer of Magical Bali Toastmasters from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Can you give some short speech?
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity given, and thank you for all your trust. This is such an honor and opportunity for me to serve my club better. So I will need more guidance for you, but in the end, let's grow together. Happy anniversary.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Sylvia. Now let's move on to the last position, and that is Surgeon at Arms, and the candidate is Amelia Dewey. Is there any objection to this?
No, definitely no.
Definitely no. Okay, so then the position is sold to Amelia Dewey. So congratulations to Amelia Dewey for being the Surgeon at Arms for Magical Bali Toastmasters from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Can you give some speech?
Good evening, everyone, members, and all the guests. Thank you so much for the chance. Hopefully, I could learn how to become the Surgeon at Arms and I could serve in this term. Thank you so much. Let's work together.
Okay, thank you. And that would be all. And with this, I I want to congratulate you all, guys, for being the next Exco. And I wish, and I also believe, that the growth of the club are in the good hands. And it's been a rewarding experience as well for me to serve as an Exco for two years already and being as the President and to have experience to be the leader. So yeah, again, congratulations. And with this, let's start to the meeting. So therefore, I would like to call the Toastmasters of the meeting tonight, and it will be distinguished Toastmasters Miranda. So to Miranda, I will give the control.
Thank you, Ajay. Thank you. Oh, well, guys, this is a very special meeting. Thank you for coming to Magical Bali tonight. It is, well, as has been said, three days ago, we became eleven years old. And that's, I would say, intermediate age, as clubs goes. We're not brand new, but we're also not quite senior, but we're getting there. And it's also very special because today is the last meeting of the year, and what a year it has been. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one is not like other terms for us. We have, we have, we're not finished, the term is not finished yet, but we're almost finishing with flying colors. We achieved many accolades, one among them is President Distinguished Club, which we achieved, like, we're probably the second club in the whole District Eighty-seven that achieved that. And we had a very steady membership. And still, we have many achievements in terms of educational achievements. We needed ten goals, but I think there's so many of the members who've achieved multiple level completions, multiple path completions. So many things to celebrate and to be happy about. And now, and actually, one last thing, I got a, I talked to Augustinus yesterday, our program quality director, and he said to me, Miranda, how do you feel if we make Magical Bali the benchmark for a club for District Eighty-seven? And I was astonished, you know, like, because he's asking that, and he wants Magical Bali to share everything that we do to become that we have become. I think that is a great honor, isn't it? How do you guys feel about that? Do you guys wanna take on that responsibility to continue to be the forerunner, to be the, I guess, the innovator and to stay strong and eclipse the results that we've achieved this year? So that's what we need to think about. Where do we want to go from here? What's next? And as we all know, and this has been said by many great leaders, wise leaders, that what got us here, what get us there, and we need to think about that. If we're just doing what we've done, we're not gonna get any better. We're just, we're going to be now, I'm gonna use the word eclipse in a different way. No, actually, yeah, eclipse. Is that correct, Harry? Both ways? Because the other one, I wanna say the other one, because eclipse is a very interesting word. So yeah, we have a lot to think about, and I'm so pleased with the new Exco, with the new injection, because sometimes Exco is just like recycling of the Exco members. We do different roles, but this time, almost all new. And I'm very, very excited. I feel it is like a new start. The eleventh year is, I guess, where we're going to talk now, but it's this coming term, I feel it's a new start, a fresh start, new beginning, a fresh start. And let's capitalize on it. So congratulations to all the Excos. I think we have a great future ahead, many possibilities, many options, and it's up to us how far and how high we want to achieve. And so that's our theme for today. What's next? I think we can all reflect on that and reflect on even just what's next from today to the next day, or from this week to the next week, or from this month, or this year to the next year. And today's word of the day is eclipse, and I would like to ask Harry to explain this word.
Thank you, Toastmaster Miranda. I am your grammarian today, and as usual, I will be looking at your use of English, in particular, the word of the day, eclipse. Now, there are actually two generally accepted meanings, the word eclipse. The first is like a lunar eclipse or a solar eclipse. That is when one celestial body, a planet, for example, or in our case, the Earth, the moon, and sun, the sun's in the center, we have a solar eclipse. That's where the Earth comes between the sun and what's behind it, so it's a shadow. That's eclipse, that's what we know. But tonight, my fellow Toastmasters, we're not going to use the word eclipse in the sense of celestial bodies. Forget astronomy. Tonight, we're gonna use the word eclipse in the sense of a state of losing either your reputation or a state of becoming more obscure, less and less important. So for example, the word eclipse, you might want to use it to say, well, the talent of Nicki Minaj has eclipsed the talent of some other singer. Okay, so the word eclipse is like you're saying something is becoming more important, and then something is becoming less important, going down and reducing in favor. And don't forget, the word of the day, there's a challenge, Miranda, and I hope I will challenge all of you to use the word of the day as often as possible. I will listen very carefully, and I will announce the marks and who is the champion word of the day user. I just made that up, sorry, Miranda. So that's what eclipse means. Enjoy it. Back to you, Miranda.
Thank you, Harry. This is going to be exciting, the word eclipse. Yes, thank you for the very clear and very detailed explanation of the meaning, and I think all of us understand or know what eclipse mean and will use it. And that is the challenge of a good word of the day, will people use it? Nobody uses the word of the day, so let's see. Let's
Sorry, can you just The second meaning of eclipse, again, I did not catch.
Well, absolutely, Hadif. So too much coffee? Is it too much Malacca coffee? Okay, let me repeat that again. So the word eclipse, to eclipse something is to make that thing less important. For example, reputation going down, or its importance going down. So for example, you could say, your Prime Minister, the speech of the Prime Minister totally eclipsed the speech of the Minister of Finance. So the Minister of Finance's speech became less important when we heard the speech of the Prime Minister. Does that help you in any way, Toastmaster Hadif?
Yes, good, good.
Fantastic. So use the word of the day. I expect at least ten from Hadif.
I would like to add something.
Sure.
I work in semiconductors and I work for a machine manufacturer, back end, I'm sorry, a testing equipment. And I work on a machine which we call Eclipse. We have matrix, we have H, we have pyramid, we have some E, and my machine happened to be Eclipse.
Okay, that, by the way, Miranda, Hadif has just used the word eclipse three times and it's going on my scorecard. Congratulations.
Thank you. Actually, I would like to add something more to eclipse because in last week, in my other club, Trainers and Coaches Advanced, we also use the word eclipse, but the dark side of it. And we have here Jay, who was the Toastmaster of the meeting last week, and he was explaining and he was using that a lot, and I would like to call upon Jay to use it the other one, because we were asked to say, what was the dark night of our
Yeah, I can actually, and also just very briefly in one sentence, touch upon Hadif's question. Eclipse, to make it very clear, can be used in two ways. One is to say, the advent of television eclipsed the radio drama. I'll repeat that. The advent of television eclipsed the radio drama. That's one usage. The second one, which we used last time, was that you could have something eclipse you, which means that there's a dark shadow that falls in your life. And what we talked about was, when is it in your life that you really shine, or you're shone? And when is it that you felt there was an eclipse, the dark side? You know, when you were down and you felt there was a shadow on you, but that was another usage, right? So either way, guys, whichever comes to your mind, try to use that as often as possible. Thank you.
Three points for you, Jay. Three uses of the word eclipse. This is so good. Can I just add one quick thing? Sorry, Miranda. When you hear the word eclipse, could everyone help me, please? Because I'm really lazy grammarian. Couldn't you just like give the speaker sort of like a wave or a clap? You know, so if you hear the word eclipse, what do you do? Come on, everybody, let me see you move. Come on, timer, Puspita. This is not this, this, like that. Yeah, so when you hear the word eclipse, go, then it makes my life easier. Thank you. Bye. Back to you, Miranda.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the last thing about eclipse, so I just wanna use that word again and again. This time, we're gonna use eclipse in the more positive side, the, for the positive meaning, so which is outshining or better than or more than, rather than the dark side. So that we don't get confused in how to use it for this particular meeting and particular word of the day and related to the theme, of course. So thank you, Jay, thank you, Harry, and also the addition from Hadif. So let's get moving with our meeting today, and yes, we have a few guests, so
Sorry, Miranda, in Malacca, I think in Malaysia, we have a suite called Eclipse as well.
Okay.
And send you all later when I go out and see Eclipse Suite.
Okay. All right, thank you, Hadif. Well, this is a very unusual session so far, because
Yeah, not moving from the word.
There's a lot of interest. I think the word eclipse has invited so many ideas and thoughts, and luckily, we have our earlier session cut a little bit shorter than we expected. So we do have this little extra time to banter, so to speak. All right, so I know that we have some guests here who probably come to the Toastmasters meeting for the first time, so I would like to explain a little bit about Toastmasters. So Toastmasters was founded in nineteen twenty-four primarily to help young people, young men in particular, to overcome their fear of public speaking, because at that time, the fear of public speaking surpassed or eclipsed the fear of deaths. And so our founder, Ralph C. Smedley, noted this, and he had this great passion and desire to help the young people. So he started this club, Toastmasters, and it has evolved. This is nineteen twenty-four, so we are how many years now? Anyone can tell me, seventy-six? Is that right? No, ninety-six, sorry. Ninety-six or
Almost ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, right? Almost ninety-seven, ninety-seven this year. So it's been evolving, and it has helped many of us. That's why we are here as members. I've been a member for thirteen years, so there are many members who have been also members for a long time, and we stick to it because we had experienced the benefits and the personal growth from Toastmasters. So there are, can somebody give me the stats? How many clubs are there in the world? Does anybody know? Okay, I'm gonna give it a round, yes. No, the clubs are, but yes, sixteen, right? Sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand clubs in over hundred and forty-three countries, and in, I think about almost fourteen thousand clubs. Sorry, there are fourteen thousand clubs, and there are about three hundred sixty-five members. So there are many, and once you become a member, you can visit all the clubs, especially with the online now. You can just go clubbing around the world. I know somebody, Alicia Curtis, who have visited forty-five countries just to visit Toastmasters clubs, and that has become her new obsession. So today, you're going to see more or less a typical Toastmasters meeting format that consists of three different segments. The first one is the prepared speech, so that is usually done by the members, because they have to be members to prepare their speech, and they would be later evaluated, which is another session, part of the, this, sorry, the segment. And then the second segment is the impromptu speech or unprepared speech. And we usually give this for guests to get a taste of speaking, of thinking on their feet and a taste of Toastmasters, and you also will be evaluated. And then the last segment, which is the meat of Toastmasters, and the reason why we grow and why we develop and why we transform, is called the evaluation session, and there will be many evaluators and who would evaluate many aspects, many different aspects. And for that, I would like to call our general evaluator to explain that part of the evaluation. So I would like to call upon our general evaluator tonight, Seni Chirani. There you are. Please give Seni a warm welcome.
Thank you, Madam Toastmasters of the meeting, Distinguished Toastmaster Miranda. Good evening, good afternoon, fellow Toastmaster and distinguished guests. My name is Seni. I am current PPPR from Magical Bali. But then I will hand over my duty to John. All right, today, I am your general evaluator, fellow Toastmasters. I will evaluate everything since the beginning until this meeting close. But I'm not alone to evaluate this whole meeting. I will work with my ah counter, John. Please spotlight him. John is our ah counter today. He will practice his listening skills by listening to any filler sounds, any filler words. Right, John? Give me some signal. Yeah, and then ballot counter. Yeah, today, our President Batoro Ajay will serve as a ballot counter too. So ladies and gentlemen, these two handsome guy will serve us today. Okay, next, I will introduce the timer of today. She is Toastmaster Puspita from Den Pasar Bahasa Toastmasters Club. Hello, Puspita. Would you show us how you're gonna deliver the time signal? Okay, for the prepared speeches?
For prepared.
Okay, over to you, Puspita.
And for a prepared speech, five minutes, I will rise the green light, and six minute, yellow, yellow light, and seven minute, red light. For evaluation, two minutes, green light, two minutes and thirty second, yellow light, and three minutes, red light. For table topic, one minute, it's green light, and one minute thirty second is yellow light, and two minutes is red. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our beautiful timer from the back. And last one is our grammarian, Mr. Harry, but you are already introduced by our madam Toastmaster of the meeting, so I don't have to call you up again. All right, it's fine. Okay, talking about table topic session, just now, our timer mentioned. Yeah, I will also evaluate the table topic speakers today. Okay, so for all of the table topics speaker, don't be afraid. I will not judge you, but just try, and if you make some mistake, it's fine, it's fine, it's totally fine. Okay, fellow Toastmaster and guests, this is my team, and we will serve you today. Enjoy the meeting. Back to you, Toastmaster of the meeting, distinguished Toastmaster Miranda.
Thank you, Seni. Thank you very much. And now we all know who are going to be evaluating us for all those different roles, and they will give their report at the very end of the meeting. So now, we are going to continue on with the sequence of the meeting. We will start with the first segment of this meeting, which is the prepared speech session. And today, we have two speakers, and I could say both of the speakers are somewhat advanced in Toastmasters. They're doing advanced projects, and okay, I won't tell you much about them. I will let, okay, actually, I'm going to introduce the first speaker. So the first speaker is none other than our member Amelia Dewey, who is the incoming SAA. And Amelia has been a member for, I think, close to three years now, and she has gone through leaps and bounds, has achieved, one of the first to achieve the path completions. And so tonight, she will be also delivering an important speech. But I will not introduce her project. And another thing about Amelia, she is a, I think called pharmacist in English, an apotheker in Indonesia. It's a pharmacist. She's also a lecturer in Lombok, not in Bali. And she's been very active, and she's also a member of the Den Pasar Bahasa Toastmasters, and one of the founders, the charter members. And she has a very special hobby or special passion, I don't know if it still stands, but she loves Korean band, Korean boy bands, and she would travel to Korea and other countries to follow the, I don't know, is that follow the groupies or follow the bands and the shows? Or doing all the special things for the group, the group? So you can ask her if you want to know about Korean bands. And she would, tonight, she would be evaluated by Sangita Anand, a fellow member from Trainers and Coaches Advanced, from, coming all the way from Bangalore. So Sangita, please introduce Amelia's project.
Thank you, Miranda, and thank you for having me over today, everyone. Now, the speaker Amelia is attempting L two P one, which is understanding your communication style. The speech timing is five to seven minutes, and the purpose of this project is for the member to learn about different communication styles and identify his or her primary style. The purpose of this speech is for the member to share the impact of his or her style on others. The member will deliver a well-organized speech about some aspect of communication style. The member may choose to speak about his or her own communication style or the impact of communication styles on him or her. The speech can be humorous, informational, or any other style the member chooses it to be. The speech should not be a report on the content of understanding your communication style project. And the title of this speech is one second. One second. Having some... Yeah, the title of this speech is Talk Less, Listen More. Now over to the speaker, Talk Less, Listen More, Amelia.
Hey, can you hear my voice clearly? Yeah. We know that communication is a daily activity. And actually, there is nothing can be done without communicating with other. And if it's not do, if we're doing communication not accurately or precisely, it could damaging our life, our relationship with other. It could also give you, get you to the wrong direction. For example, couple of years ago, I went to Surabaya. I visit the biggest mall there. Actually, I'm not really good with directions, so I, I getting lost easily. And I want to go to the parking basement. So I asked the security, where's the lift nearest lift that could lead me to the, to the parking, to the basement? And he give the direction. I choose the lift, but I ended going to the garbage dump. It is because I didn't give clear instruction what, which, which kind of area of basement that I want to reach. So once unclear direction could give you to the unclear or wrong, wrong direction. And of course, if you're communicating with other, it is very, very annoying when you, when they are not listening to you. For example, if you talk with your friends or college about your burden or about your workload and they're just like, what, what, sorry, I'm not listening to you. Yeah. Do you feel it is like very annoying? And especially if they, if they're saying like, what? Everything that you did is not comparable what happened to me. It's like invalidating our feeling, right? What of that thing is kinda, yeah, annoying? And how to become a good communicator? And the answer that I know is to join and become a Toastmaster member. I remember now, I think like two or three years ago, I also get this project. I do, I did this project, getting know about the communication style. And at that time, a communication style is supportive and analytic style. And I try again for this moment. And for this moment, I try. And the answer is actually supportive, probably supportive style. I think it's because after I joined Toastmaster, I become more supportive. And in supportive style from the Toastmaster guidance, supportive style kinda more like, like a personal approachment. And also, one skill that is very neat in supportive style is active listening. I learned so much about active listening. I learned from the training, mentor mentee training that Miranda helped. And of course, every daily evaluation session that we did in Toastmaster that, that make us learn how to listen without interrupting the others. It is very, very helping me in my daily life. As a supportive communication, in supportive communication, it's helping me when I became academic counselor to my student. So because I like to approach them personal, I like to talk with them one by one or maybe in smaller group, they tend to putting up their guard and they talk easily with me. Because, yeah, there's no, there's no one in there in the group and there's not many people. So they talk easily. And what I did is I listened and tried to probing, what is probing? It's like asking information about what they said. And after that, giving several comment to them and also giving solution with that problem. That's really, really helping. And one experience, the new experience that I have after become active listening, actually, I have, I have been supervising a student. And one of the student is not, is not really drive. I might, it's not, it's like less, having less intellectual with the others. So they might a bit slower with regular student. So what I do to approach them is I try to make safe and comfortable environment when we talk or communicate. What I mean with safe and comfortable is not only we're not judging, but also, yeah, you can do anything and you can be yourself as long as we try to reach our goal together, is how to make you graduate. And that is, that's one thing that I can, that I do. And the second, after I consulted and also communicating with them, I realized that actually, they become slower than the regular student. They have a personal problem that actually block their way. That is the thing that block their way. And after making it, yeah, it's okay, it's okay. You, you just do what you wanna do. At the end, they, they, they just finish it. And the last thing that also I get, yeah, with this kind of student, many people already judging them. Because you are a little slow, because you are slower than other, you might not graduate. You might, you might not get your title at the end. But even though many people not staying in front of them, but they already know. And inside, I think they like already judge themselves. Oh, I cannot do this because everyone see me like this, something like that. And what you need to do is to put faith on them. Even though it's only you that believe in them, it actually really matter to them. And it's helping them to moving forward, even though it's also not really, really fast. So ladies and gentlemen, once again, to be a good communicator is not always to talk more, but now it's listen more. So talk less, listen more. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. Wow, isn't that a simple but huge truth, big truth? Talk less, listen more. I mean, we hear it often, but how much do we take it really and practice it? So thank you so much for the reminder. And if I were your student, I would love you to be my, my teacher. I always like somebody to be able to listen. So I, I can, I can see why you'd be a popular lecturer. And thank you for that speech, for a great reminder for all of us. All right, our next speaker is going to do a special project. And, but I would like to call the evaluator to introduce her.
Thank you.
And he knows me well, I mean, he knows this speaker well. Over to TJ.
What next? Now, what if I told you listening is sexy? Now that makes you all lean forward, want to hear more, right? Now, what if I told you that our next speaker actually facilitates workshops under that title? A life coach, a mentor, a motivational speaker, an author on the topics of emotional healing and effective communication? Ladies and gentlemen, I do not want to eclipse the stellar speaker who is gonna come up next. So please put your hands together and help me welcome DTM Miranda Rumi, who would be delivering a seven-minute address as part of her DTM project and titled Rock Your Role Project. Rock Your Role Project, DTM Miranda Rumi, take it away.
Thank you, Jay. What a rocking introduction. Thank you so much. So fellow Toastmasters, you just heard an amazing introduction by an evaluator. And that should be a job of Toastmaster of the meeting. But since I'm the speaker, I would not be doing that. But you know, when you listen to an introduction like that or a Toastmaster of the meeting who could do, could speak and could deliver very smoothly with poise, you probably wonder, wow, that is so amazing. I would like to be able to do that. I'm just new, though. How long will it take me to be able to do that? Or how can we learn to be like that? Don't you have questions like that? Have you ever have questions like that when you see somebody who does their role really well? And you're not able to do that yet? I, I knew I have because when I first joined Toastmasters and hardly able to communicate or to speak fluently because of, I was very nervous and I was just a very bad speaker when I started. And when I look at that, it's like, wow, how could I do that? And well, it took me thirteen years to be able to speak somewhat fluently and smoothly, maybe with more confidence than I used to. But would we need that many years to speak like Jay, to speak like Sani or Harry? Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, Toastmasters friends, I have good news and bad news for you. Well, since we all want to end in high notes, so let me get on with the bad news first, right? So let's get the bad news out of the way. Yes, I've been a member for thirteen years. And as far as I know, there are no tutorials on how to do your role well, available anywhere. There's maybe like a YouTube tutorial from Toastmaster, but it's, it's very short and there's no interaction. And we're supposed just to be able to do it like that. And this, to me, it doesn't really help. And I have to watch a lot of videos, a lot of people. And maybe I could get better, but there is no real standard for it. And unfortunately, we don't have enough materials, enough role models that can show us how to do our roles well. We left to, so what to do? Right? We left to our own devices to figure out how to do it. And maybe watch some senior members and some are, yeah, some are good, but some are maybe not so good. And some clubs don't even have, you know, good role takers for certain roles. So there's, there's so many variations. And this had been really bugging me because sometimes I see really, really great role takers. And then there's the next club, just for the same role taker, this, there's just no, no standard there, no feeling there. And it's just feels flat and it makes the whole meeting unappealing, right? So this is what I'm taking you to, to the good news. Well, before that, let me just say one more thing before that. If we have, the role takers are not doing their job or their roles effectively, the results are bad quality meetings. But yeah, the, the meetings are not good or not enjoyable. And what is the impact of that? If the meeting is not interesting, not exciting, doesn't have the energy, members don't feel excited about coming. And if members don't, aren't excited about coming, then of course, we also cannot attract new members, right? And that's how some clubs decline because of the lack of good role takers. And so, but here, this is where I want to bring you the good news. The good news is we are going in less, okay, a week from this coming Sunday, we are going to do a special event, an educational event, where each role is going to be presented by experienced Toastmasters members. And they will share what is, what is the benefit of doing a role? And then the do's and don'ts. And then also, how to do it if you are a beginner? And also, how to do it if you wanna take your role to the next meeting? Isn't that exciting? And well, actually, I haven't told you what is exciting about this. The exciting part is we're going to record these videos individually. So there's gonna be a tutorial video on how to be a Tom with a real-life example done by our experienced members. And you see, Jay was nodding and smiling and I didn't see Harry. But Jay and Harry, they are going to be the presenters. Jay is going to be the Tom presenting on how to do Tom. And Harry is going to present what? Can you guys guess what is Harry going to do?
Grammar.
Grammarian. Grammarian. So Harry is going to show you how to make grammarian role exciting, engaging, and interesting, right? So yeah, this is the project that I'm going to do, that we're going to do. I'm going to be the executive producer because this is going to be a recording show. It's like going into a talk show where they're taping the show. And you guys in the audience can ask questions and be part of the show. So actually, I wanted to know from you guys, this, is this something that you're interested in or excited about? Please type one if you think it's a number one, numero uno idea. And if you don't think it is, then you can type any number, I don't care. All right, I see only one, so great. So everybody agrees, it's gonna be an exciting project. And so it's going to be, please save the date. It's going to be on June twenty-seventh, starting at 6:00 PM GMT plus seven or 7:00 PM at GMT plus eight. And everybody here is going to be sent an invitation and really hope that you come so that you know what's gonna happen next and how to get the access of these videos. So that's my project. Thank you and see you next Sunday. Back to you, back to me. My God, I'm the Toastmaster of the meeting. Okay, every time I do a speech, I'm still, I'm still excited.
And I, Madam Toastmasters?
Who is that speaking? Who is speaking?
Harder? Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, regarding your, your program just now, actually, you came out with a very vital statement. Many of them don't do role-playing because they do not know how to do.
Yeah.
You see, example, a, a new Toastmasters coming, they say you do a counter. You just count the R, you just count this, you just count that and present. Grammarian, you just give a word, you catch the word, you catch the mistake and you give. There is no technicality, there is no, what do you call the process? Like, how do you count? How do you record? How do you present? Actually, my friend has just taken office of Malaka Toastmasters. And this is what actually we plan to do. You plan to have workshops where we call the specialized people coming and teach those who want to learn. You see, when in fact...
Okay, yes, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, Harder, I have to interrupt you because we're, we're running a bit tight with time. But we will ask for your input later on. We have a special segment dedicated to that. So please share your input later, right? And so let's just go with the agenda for now. Thank you, Harder. Really looking forward to your comments for later. All right, so can I ask the timer to show you, to show us the time? So what time do we have, Puspita? Or do you want, okay, I'm going overtime. Is it eight zero two?
Yeah, it's overtime for you.
All right. Well, I guess I just want Amelia to be the winner tonight. So I forfeited. Not true, not true. I, that's something that I need to work on. So thank you, thank you, Puspita. So we have a default winner for the prepared speaker. We can continue with our next segment, which is, everybody said this is the, this session that you're waiting for. Is that right? Exciting, right? And we have, I'd like to call our Table Topic Master, the incoming VPE for Magical Vali Toastmasters, Ayu Wirowati or Wira. Please take over. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Miranda. So fellow Toastmasters and guests, are you ready for this second session? Yeah, all right. So, okay, show your times out if you're ready. Thank you. I consider so many participants who would like to join. Unfortunately, I only have some slots. But let's see, let's run. But let's see, Letron, Toastmaster uh for the Tom, how is it going to be? Can we add or just fix three? Okay, so I would like to invite um Toastmaster. Okay, who wants to volunteer yourself first? Raise your hand. Oh, Diane, okay.
Thank you.
I can see Diane. Any of you would like to volunteer yourself again?
Yeah, I try.
Alright, so let's just start from Diane, yeah? Letron, I will wait for another two more speakers who would like to volunteer yourself. Okay, Diane. Uh, okay, I'm going to, oh, I'm going to share screen. And can host enable me to share screen?
Is Wira, Wira has to be co-host first?
Oh, okay. That's fine, that's fine. I will just uh type the, what is that?
Yeah, well, well, maybe the host couldn't give her a co-host and that helps.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Alright, can you see on the chat, Diane? Yeah, so this is a quote. I want you to interpret or elaborate based on your thought. So this is what it says, even when you know what's coming, you're never prepared of how it feels. Okay, can please share your thought about this quote? Screen is yours, Diane. Okay. When you move. Am I audible? Yes. Hello, Toastmaster, all my friends. Have you ever have a change when you has been given a new opportunity, but you never have experience with it? Can you raise your hand?
Alright, when I still worked in hospitality, I has been given one opportunity from my senior. It was my first time. And it was quite big project. At the time, I have to manage a lot of stuff done in myself. How about uh, I couldn't manage it? How about there is the problem? How about if uh there is complaint and anything? Until I find out, all my senior, all people who had, who receive the same project also feel the same things. Then I just try, I ask someone, I prepare, I manage. Even there are a lot of problems, a lot of things, a lot of question, yes, we learn by mistake. So if you have new project, never worry, just receive. Because we learn by doing and in every doing, there is always opportunity to grow. Back to um Table Topic Master.
Alright, thank you very much, Diane. That's totally true, yeah? Just keep trying, show your award, so there always opportunity in a great challenge or something that we can learn behind it. Really nice message, Diane. Alright, so who wants to try for the second chance? Please, yes, raise your hand before I point at you. Okay, let's try to, Toastmaster Hardif, would you like to to share your thought for this coming, okay?
I'm just about to raise my hand and uh waste your time.
You're muted, Wira.
Yes.
Puspita?
Wira, you are muted.
He's muted.
Okay, can you see the timer? Puspita is our timer. And this is the situation, there is no before.
One minute, one minute. Okay, I see her. Okay.
Alright, now.
The question?
Yes, this is the quotation, there is no before, there is only now and what comes next. Okay, share your thought about this quotation. The screen is yours, Hardif.
There is no before, there is only now and what's come next. I agree with this statement. Because I'm brought up with one thing and I learned one thing from my father. He will tell me what has happened yesterday or before, you cannot do anything about it. So no point crying over spilled milk. What you can do is make the best of what you have now for a better tomorrow or a better future. What is tomorrow depends on what you do today. Just like what you saw today, you reap tomorrow. You saw durian, you get durian. You saw rambutan, you don't get durian. So, but what has happened yesterday, you can't do anything. You have sown durian yesterday, you get durian today. You won't get mango. So the best piece of advice I will say is just this take yesterday as a precedent or as a uh, as a lesson. And make better of what you have now for the better future. So whatever mistakes you have made in the past, correct it now. Because that is the only thing you can do, correct for a better future. So enjoy today, hoping for a better future tomorrow. So do not look past. That is why you see in our driving car, you have a small mirror behind and a big windscreen in front. So that you look front and move front. Just look behind to remember what happened, the good and bad times, but you are facing in front. So I will strongly say this, there was no yesterday or before, it's only now and a better future tomorrow. Back to you, Table Topic Master. Thank you.
Wow, thank you very much for sharing, Hardif. Oh, that's, that's really true. Focus on today and tomorrow. Okay, so the past, it was just lesson for us to grow. Okay, that's really nice sharing, uh, Hardif. Okay, we will move to the, I don't know, is it the last speaker, Toastmaster uh, Dita Mirana? Do we still have or, okay, let's just try. The third speaker I would like to invite, really miss Sylvia's voice. So Sylvia, I would like to invite you to share your thought for this third quotation. Okay, can you see the submit? What drives us, but the climb itself, what matters, alright? So Sylvia, yeah, let's finish your sound.
Can you repeat the question again? Can you explain it?
Okay, so can you see on the chat? The sub, what drives us, the submit, the submit, oh, that's just analogy. And then, but the climbs itself, what matters? Okay, do you understand?
Yep.
Yep, alright, the screen is yours.
We always think about going to the top or uh having what is it that looks shiny and bright, whatever is it that looks very, very great. But the thing is, all of that greatness, all of the awesomeness, they do not come just by looking and then, yeah, that's it, no. What we do during the process, what we see, what we experience is what makes the summit really matters. Because during our journey, during the experience to having all the greatness, we can actually understood what is it that really moves us? What is it that really makes all that top of things really looks extraordinary? Um, and it's, it's a, it's a very worth journey to be done. I think that's it. Sorry, it's been so long.
Okay, thank you, Toastmasters Sylvia, for sharing, yeah? All the lessons actually gather on the climbing part, right? Okay, um, Toastmaster uh, Dita Mirana, do we still have more time? Actually, we do, right?
Yes, I did say, I did write in the message already.
Yes, yes.
In the chat, oh, yeah. Okay, well, let's call a guest, a real guest.
Yeah.
Non-Toastmaster guest.
Chitra.
Chitra or Juliana, please.
Yeah, Chitra, so I would like to share.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Chitra. So this is the quotation for you. Okay, I will do it for you. If you're too comfortable, it's time to move on. Terrified of what's next, you're on the right. Okay, the screen is yours.
Alright, good evening. I would say this is my first time joining this, the first session of Toastmasters. And it's interesting to see the, this um, the, the topic. If you are too comfortable, it's time to move on, terrified of what's next, and you are on the right channel. The first thing that comes to my mind when I see this is actually my, my own experience. When I need to step out of my comfort zone. Um, back then, if I need to tell this story, back then when I was appointed as a, as a master of ceremony in, in my university period, I was very terrified because at that time, I needed to speak in English. And the event was actually a great one because it's a dancing session in universities in Malang. And then that, that was actually the first time of me doing that. What happened with me? I thought at the time, it was like a month before I couldn't sleep at all. Because I was thinking on how could I perform better? Because my dean would be there, my lectures would be there, all the important people in my faculties would be there and seeing me for the first time. Even though I, I would not be dancing, I would be only bringing the show. But it was actually my job to create the show to be appealing, entertaining, to make me, to make my show eclipse the other show at a time. So then, um, I need to step out from my comfort zone, I prepare myself, learn from the best, I found a mentor of mine at the time, it was my, my senior, tried to learn from him. And as the time goes by, as, as the time went by, I would be proud to, to call that the event went successfully. And I was comfortable to be a master of ceremony. And also, that also lead me to the careers that I had in the future. As a trainer, as a, as, as leading of, as leader of the university. Thank you, back again to Table Topic Master.
Such a wonderful experience, just by taking that challenge in the beginning, you have great opportunities coming along. Wow, relation, Chitra for sharing, thank you very much. Okay, uh, we still have guests here.
Uh, no, I think we need to uh wrap this up.
Alright.
We're supposed to do three, we already did four.
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much, all uh, Toastmasters for sharing your thoughts tonight. Back to our Toastmaster of the meeting, Dita Mirana.
So thank you. Uh, let's check with the time. Uh, do we want to do, can Puspita just, is it already all reported? The time so that we can, we know who to vote later or who are eligible or not eligible to be voted on?
Yes, our speaker is eligible.
All speakers eligible, wonderful. Okay, alright, so we will continue on. Normally, we would, uh, actually, we would still do that. We will take picture for now and then we'll take a quick break before we move on to the general evaluation. Because we have a few more things towards the end of the meeting. So S A A, could we have the photo taken for the group? Who's going to do that?
Yeah, on behalf, on be, on behalf of S A A, I'm gonna take the picture, so, right? Okay, everyone, please keep your best smile in one, two, three. Okay, one more time, this is for the formal, the formal pose that you get used to do, alright? Letheran, we're gonna do the crazy one, okay, hold on. The formal one, in one, two, three. Alright, now let's be crazy, everyone. I'm gonna count until five. Done, please make a crazy move or any move that you really like, alright? In one, two, three, two, four, five. One more time. Okay, thank you, everyone. Back to you, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Lita. And Puspita, can we time it maybe for three minutes or, yeah? Let's, let's do five minutes and we can just chat, open the meeting. Uh, everybody can undo, unmute themselves and we will uh, recommence at twenty fifteen, or in five minutes, twenty eighteen, sorry. So yes, let's have an informal chat and if anybody needs to visit the restroom or have a little break, wanna come or grab something to eat. And uh, yeah, I would just like to see also some people that I haven't talked to. Yes, good day. And Diane, haven't seen you in a long time. So happy to see you back.
Yes.
To see everyone again.
Yeah, so Diane is, is an active member. Uh, but she's our old member and uh, good to see you. Are you planning to come back to Toastmasters or taking, still taking a break?
I'm planning on Toastmaster course.
Sorry?
Play a fall around in Toastmaster, I mean.
Another round?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I will visit uh different clubs in Toastmaster class because there are a lot of
clubbing.
Uh, clubbing, yeah, clubbing, Toastmasters.
Uh, online, Toastmasters online clubbing.
Yeah. Yeah, keep the flame alive.
Yes. I'd like to say, welcome to Chitra. Uh, I met Chitra several years ago, back in Sopito Nusa Dua. It was a surprise, what a small world.
Hello. Yeah.
Andre remembering.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I don't know who, uh, who brought you here, Chitra. Yeah, but it was, it was really nice meeting you here. I remember I was going to the hotel about to teach the hotel staff at the time and then Chitra. Yes, that's right, and Chitra was the person who was in charge from the H R D of the hotel. And she was very friendly and I had really great impression. So what she shared just now was true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pandi. It's nice to see you here as well.
Yeah, yeah, lovely, lovely to meet you and everyone here. Yeah, enjoy the break, yeah, and enjoy the big thing, the rest of the meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, what, what a small world. You know what? Uh, my, uh, my leader in my company is actually, Andre knows her as well, so like, wow, Andre knows everybody here.
Yeah.
It goes around, yeah. So, good day, how are you?
Good. New V P P hour.
Yeah, good, thank you, Miranda.
Oh, okay, S A A, no, sorry, I was
Oh, good day, it's S A A today.
Yes.
Yeah.
First time.
Yay, you did such a great job. Good day.
You know, all the roles are so important, so I hope you guys come to um, watch the, the workshop or the training next week. Because everybody who's presenting are, are really top notch.
Yeah, sure. What do you hope?
And I'd like to address, uh, to greet Juliana. Where are you from, Juliana?
Uh, hello, I'm from Mandan.
Uh, are you a friend of Sunny?
Yes.
Mandan.
Well, yeah, so, Madame Miranda, so Juliana, uh, was the past member of Friendship Mandarin Toastmaster in Mandan. So, her Mandarin is very fluent.
Wonderful. Do you speak Mandarin too, Sunny?
Yeah.
You speak Mandarin?
I, not really.
Actually.
But, but I can understand a bit, yeah. But Juliana is more fluent than me.
No, no, no.
Over to you, Ju.
Okay.
Yeah. What made you visit this club, um, Ju, Juliana?
I'm sorry.
What, what brought you here? I mean, Sunny dragged you here or?
Yes, because, uh, one year ago, and Sunny gone and then, uh, to Bali. I hear a lot about this, uh, club, Magical Bali. So, I want to join it.
Join it? You wanna join the club? I joined the meeting, I was joining the club, yeah. Well, okay, well, thank you for visiting us and I hope we didn't, um, fall below your expectations. Yeah. Alright, well, you guys, this is twenty eighteen, so, um, our break is over. We will resume our meeting again and we will now start with the evaluation session. So, I'd like to call Sunny to take over this, uh, segment. Please welcome Sunny, our general evaluator.
Yes, Madame Toastmaster of the meeting, thank you very much for the calling. Okay. Now, we will continue to proceed the evaluation session and I would like to call our two distinguished evaluators. Okay, let us welcome the first evaluators, which are, which is no other than the distinguished Toastmaster Sangita Anna. The, the virtual stage is yours.
Thank you, Sunny. Um, I'm not able to see the timer. Is she there?
Where's Pushpita? Yeah, timer is there.
Okay, fine. Just let me pin her.
You pinned the timer?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, am I audible?
Sure, you're clear, very much clear. Please.
Thank you. So, Amelia, talk less, listen more. Now, I just want to evaluate less and listen to more of your speeches. Thank you so much for that very nice introduction into your communication style. I really like the way you started the speech with a personal story on how a wrong communication can send someone completely in the wrong direction. I mean, I really liked it. It was a very simple example that proved your point. Then you brought in Toastmasters and you talked about your supportive style that you learned from Miranda in a seminar. And that was very nice done, nicely done. And you also brought in this concept of active listening, which is not to interrupt someone when they are talking and how it has helped you in this supportive style. So, that point was very nicely done and I think that is something that we all should learn, listen to, understand rather than to respond. So, that was very nicely brought out. However, when you were talking about the supportive style of speaking, I, this active listening is just one aspect of a supportive style of speaking. There are a lot of other aspects because supportive style is both verbal and non-verbal. It also includes facial expressions, you know, body language when you nod and you know, you look at them with a lot of empathy, you speak to them with empathy, but somehow, all those were not covered. You just covered active listening. So, maybe you could cover the other aspects of supportive style of speaking which has helped you. And the second thing that I have as a, uh, as an improvement area is that you spoke a lot about the issues faced by students, like, you know, how they don't feel confident that they are going to, you know, pass the course and, you know, get to the, get to the college or finish their course on time. Now, you spoke so much about the problems that they faced that it eclipsed what you did for them through your supportive style. So, I wish you had emphasized on what you had done. Now, for example, you spoke about a particular student who was not doing as well as the others and how you, he came to you and you had a conversation. Now, I wish you had just taken that story, put in a conversation on what you told him and what he told you and then how he was before the conversation with you and how he changed after the conversation with you. That would have brought out the impact of the supportive style of speaking that you chose to do with him. That, I think, would have made supportive style of speaking very, very clear with, clear to me. And most importantly, it would have given you a perfect title correct. And one simple, uh, suggestion I can have is like, keep a background slide where you, you know, put the different aspects of supportive speaking. So, people can refer to it when you speak about it. That's one thing. I love the pacing of your speech, perfectly done. Just one small thing, please emphasize on certain words like active listening. Other than that, I loved your speech. I'm looking forward to many more such speeches from you. All the very best. Over to the general evaluator.
Wow, thank you very much, distinguished Toastmaster Sangita for your feedback. By the way, ladies and gentlemen, Toastmaster Sangita is from trainers and coaches advanced Toastmaster Group which just chartered in Bali. And for our second evaluator, Toastmaster Jai Narayan, also from trainers and coaches advanced Toastmasters Group. Ladies and gentlemen, here's Jai Narayan. Over to you, Toastmasters.
Toastmasters guests and TOMDTM Miranda Rume. Now, your pre-speech today was supposed to be a project, DTM project proposal on the betterment of any organization. And Toastmaster Miranda, today you chose a Toastmaster Club as the organization of which, if your proposal was incorporated, would eclipse any meetings ever had so far to take it to the next level. Now, three things stood out for me in your project proposal today, Miranda. Number one was your title, Rock Your Role Project. And I thought that, that was so dynamic that it was a call for action right away. I actually leaned forward when you said, Rock Your Role. Well done on that. Number two, you actually addressed an issue that is so prevalent in so many clubs around the world, especially with these online Zoom meetings, which was poor quality of the meetings thanks in large part to the quality of the role takers. Of course, it's a skill that can be learned and everybody can learn these skills with some tips and techniques and tools to become better. So, you addressed a very, very topical problem with Toastmaster Clubs. And the third thing, and the most powerful thing you did, Toastmaster Miranda, was a three C technique. The three C technique, you addressed the challenge, you mentioned the cure, and then you left the change for the workshop which have, which had us all wondering what was to come. I'll repeat it. The challenge, the first C was the quality of the meetings because of the quality of the roles. The change, well, that would come in a workshop on Sunday twenty-sixth. And of course, uh, the cure would be, uh, the workshop conducted by experienced trainers and all those roles. So, I thought the three C was very well done. Is there anything you could have improved in today's proposal and the way you presented it? Just two things, Miranda, very small minor moot points. One was, I would have recommended you pay attention to the timing because it was a five to seven minute speech. I understand you went eight minutes, twenty seconds. So, you could have framed your word count and your practice to fit within that timeframe. Number two, I thought the ending could have been more compelling and impactful. And this is only a suggestion, Miranda. You could have said, Magical Bali Toastmasters, congratulations on your eleventh anniversary. But let us not count every meeting. Let us make every meeting count. And to do that, every role counts. So, be there on Sunday twenty-sixth, find out how you two can rock that role. Thank you. So, if you had done that, that could have been a very powerful impactful ending, making us all want to probably look forward to Sunday coming tomorrow. Overall, I love the topicality of your, the relevance of your presentation. It was very badly needed, I think, for most clubs, the fact that you were so encouraging. And I must add, you were very engaging too, Miranda, when you asked us to actually share our inputs on yes or no answers in the chat box. So, I loved it and I look forward to the workshop. Back to you, Madame General Evaluator.
Wow, again, wonderful feedback from Toastmaster Jai Narayan. Okay, next, I will call the timer, Pushpita from Denpasabhasa. Please show your report.
For, for Sangita is three eighteen, for Jai Narayan is three six. So, all eligible.
Alright, thank you very much, our beautiful timer from the bat. So, both of the evaluators are eligible to be voted. Yes, ballot, are you ready? Okay, but before I call you ballot, let's welcome our Mr. Harry from Palu, Los Antara Toastmaster Club. As a grammarian, here's your stage. Over to you.
Thank you very much, General E evaluator, Toastmaster Sunny. So, I am back with my grammarian report. As always, it's going to involve you. So, I will ask you to unmute yourself when you need to do something. So, let me start by congratulating all the Toastmasters here, all the Toastmaster guests, as well as the guests for generally good and accurate use of the English language. So, everyone, please start by giving yourselves a pat on the shoulder. Come on, Miranda, give yourself a pat on the shoulder. Chitra, well done, Deanne. Amelia, what are you doing? Pat yourself on the shoulder. Well done. You gave an excellent speech. Lisa, well done. But there are things that we could have maybe improved a little. So, let's start with some common mistakes in pronunciation. I heard the word colleague, colleague. And colleague is someone you work with. So, I could say, for example, Mr. Ali is my colleague working in the same office on the Eclipse machine, colleague. So, listen to the word. Everyone, unmute yourself now and say colleague, colleague. Go ahead.
Colleague.
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 Please. Uh, 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 I'm hearing some, some things that are not exactly right. Listen, listen, listen. Colleague, colleague, and the stress is colleague. Go ahead.
Colleague.
Colleague.
Perfect. Another word that I heard mispronounced is the word senior. Listen to the word, S E N I O R, senior, senior. Can you unmute, please, and say senior? Go ahead.
Senior.
Senior.
Senior, senior. He's my senior. He was my senior in school. Senior. Go ahead.
Senior.
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 Excellent. Another word that is very often mispronounced is extraordinary. Everyone reads the whole word extraordinary, but the proper way of saying it is, listen, extraordinary, extraordinary. It's extraordinary, extraordinary, not extraordinary. It's extraordinary. So, unmute yourself now and go ahead and be extraordinary. Go ahead.
Extraordinary.
Extraordinary.
Ordinary.
Ah, stop, stop, stop. Someone said extraordinary. It's extraordinary, extraordinary. Try it again. Go ahead.
Extraordinary.
Extraordinary.
Fantastic. Okay, that's the pronunciation. I hope you've learned something. There are other words that I want to deal with now. In Indonesia, when we speak English, we always call security guards, security. Oh, I'll ask the security for help. I'll ask the security for help. No, no, no. He's a, he's a security guard, not a security, okay? He's a security guard. Now, let's focus on some of the fantastic extraordinary words that I heard tonight. One word I loved from Miranda, Toastmaster Miranda, was poise, poise, P O I S E. Poise basically means to be graceful and elegant, right? To be graceful and elegant is to speak with poise, to walk with poise, and you should use that word. It's a wonderful word. Thank you, Miranda. Then I had Chitra talking about stepping out of the comfort zone, stepping out of the comfort zone. Thank you for sharing that nice little phrase stuck in my mind. Another word that we use very often in a Toastmaster meeting is eligible, eligible. Now, be very careful and talk to you a little bit about eligible. Eligible is E L I G I B L E. I should type it down. I know, General E evaluator, but I don't have the time. I don't want to waste the time to type it down. But it's eligible. That means to be qualified. Now, the opposite of eligible, thank you very much, Sunny, the opposite of eligible is to be ineligible, ineligible. And all you do is you put a prefix of in. So, eligible, ineligible, active, inactive. So, you just put the in to say that someone is not qualified. Fantastic. Thank you, Sunny, for helping out. Now, the word, uh, the, the word that takes the, the cherry on the top is the word, the phrase, Rock Your Role. Now, why I loved Rock Your Role so much was, first of all, it's a lovely alliteration. And just for those who don't know what an alliteration is, is where you put two words together that's, that sound the same, like, two S's together, the slithering snake or you would say the babbling brook. It's an automatopia if you're into English. But basically, when you have the word rock and roll, rock your role, that's an alliteration. And the other thing that's fantastic about it is that it's a pun. It's a pun because we all know the word rock and roll, which is R O C K and R O L L. But what Miranda has very cleverly done, and Jai repeated it again, thank you for repeating it, it's punny, it's a great pun, and it says rock your role with a R O L E rather than R O L L. So, that is a fantastic clever way, use of language, A star in an IGCSE exam. Word of the day report, sorry, General E evaluator, just have to do this. The word of the day report, Sangita, congratulations, you used it once. Harder, you'd use it five times, but you cheated because you kept saying, oh, I use the Eclipse machine, I use the Eclipse machine. But I counted it as well. So, five is fantastic. Miranda, you used it four times. And the champion word of the day user today, everybody, please give Toastmaster Jai a great round of applause for using it seven times. Seven times, Jai.
Please unmute everybody and clap your hands.
Clap your hands.
Yay, Jai.
And with that, that, that's the end of my grammarian report. I hope to see you two Sundays away. Back to you, Madame General E evaluator, Toastmaster Sunny. Go ahead.
Wow, what a detailed and encouraging report, Mr. Grammarian. Okay, next, one thing that make us boop boop is the ballot cast. Yes, now, it's your turn. Vatara Ajay, please.
Yes, uh, thank you, General E evaluator. So, I am going to cast the ballot and you guys, uh, get to vote who is the best speaker according to you. And later on, I will come back and see who's going to eclipse the others. And I know it, it doesn't count anymore, but I just want to try. Alright, vote is on.
Okay.
I will close it in about a minute. So, use your chance. Okay, I think I already have, yes, it's a hundred percent. So thank you, everybody. I will end the polling and in the end of the meeting, I will come back to announce the winner of the sessions tonight. Thank you, and I will give the control back to General E evaluator.
Alright, beautiful and smooth ballot casting, Batara Aj. Okay, next, I will come, I will call my team, the next P P P R, ladies and gentlemen. Please welcome on the stage, John Manurun, over to you.
Well, I will share screen here. Alright, this is my report, well, counter. And yeah, actually, I, I was exciting, excited to listen all of you and that's my job. And now you can see here, Batara Aj, President plus ballot counter. I hear none of them. Wow. And Miranda.
I probably have enough.
Yeah, you, you as Thomas speaker, you said so and so three and oh, five? Okay, one or one, you say non lexical words, like um, one, ah, oh, five? And repeated words, three, and good, you can see there, only one and, and Seni as a G E, only one, right, I heard, and repeated word, one. Hari Elias, grammarian. What, one and one and repeated word, one. Puspita, as the timer. Wow, that's pretty, that's great, yeah. Amelia Dewey, as a speaker, one, so two, yeah, yeah, one, what, one, but two, and so on. You can see my report here, yeah? And Weera as a T T M, yeah, one, okay, one, and non lexical word, non lexical word, ah, one, and repeated word. I think you were the winner in repeated words. And Sangita Anan, as a evaluator, so two, yeah, one, and two, or one, like two, yeah, that's all. And Jai Narayan, evaluator two, wow, only one, right? I was impressed by Narayan, you spoke like a flow of waters. And Lisa Chi, oh, she doesn't speak, yeah, Hardif, oh, what, for, because one, and did they, none, Melita, none, Andre, none, Dian Ha, Hasari, so one, but one, because one, okay, one. Yeah, that's, that's it. Chitra, and three, because one, and so on. And the last one, Sylvia, and one, and um, two, and repeated words, two, yeah. That's all my reports for, for our counter. And for the last one for me, I have a tip for the next, for the next speech, just if you want to make your lost words or you forget what you want to say, just give pause, silence, and give it your time to think what you want to say. Okay, that's all. Thank you for me. Back to G.
Oh, wow, I am so amazed about this report, really. You did more detail than I did. Great job, John. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, now I think it's time for my report, right? Okay, please allow me to share the screen. Okay. Well, for being a general evaluator, actually, it's a tough job because I need to observe from the beginning until the end for the technical things and so on. Well, I have not do the G E for quite a long time, I think around one year. So I'm back after one year and I will try my best to evaluate this meeting, okay? From the beginning, from the meeting, the room has opened at six thirty and it's good. And the housekeeping announcement started at seven zero one, yeah, because I saw that an enjoyable chit chat before the meeting start, and it's good, that's good. And for the good, you as the S A, you mentioned the housekeeping rules, clear, great job. And started the election by our president. Well, this is a special meeting, so the election, we move at the beginning. Then once the speakers are being called, and when the, when every single, every speaker being called, and then the rottakers being called, the Zoom hosts or the S A have a fast hand to spotlight everyone, and that's a great job. For the Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Miranda Romy, you explained the theme very detail. And also not, not only very detail, but you engaged our guests to blend in the, in the chat. Wow, that's great. And you also explained the Toastmaster International by throwing the question, guys, do you know how many clubs already built in this world? Wow, that's, that's the beautiful introduction about the Toastmasters. Then for Ayu Wiraati, Table topic master, yes, you did well. What I felt is you give the question in the checkbox. So you're not only mentioned informally, but you also give the question to checkbox. It makes that the table topic speaker can think a while and repeat, repeat the question in their mind before they answer the question, and that's great job. For the table topic speaker, for Dian, Dian, you, I love your speaking pace is not too slow, not too fast, but it's stable. And then for Toastmaster Hardif, what I like from you is your, your body gesture, your hand gesture, also speaking. So that will, that was capture the audience, all of the audience to go into your speech. For Sylvia, you did try. I know that you not very often come to the meeting, but it's okay. Because I saw that you have nervousness, so maybe what I can suggest for your improvement is you go open to the meeting, get into more into the table topic session, so it can practice makes progress, Sylvia. And for the guest, Chitra, yes, what I like from you is you are the only one from this table topic speaker who used the word of the day. Congratulations. And for Mr. Grammarian, I like your pronunciation personally, really. But well, what I can suggest from you, maybe just a little, you can use the slide when you deliver the pronunciation session, like eligible or ineligible, in eligible, yeah, and etc. Okay, and you also count the use of word of the day. Great job. Oh, another one is in the beginning of the meeting, when Tom called you to explain details about the word of the day eclipse, am I mentioning right? Yeah, you did great on that. You do, you, you explain quite detail until Toastmaster Hardif say, okay, he got it. Great job. For timer, yes, you deliver a good job today, but what I can suggest you is you make a recap in the end of every session when the last speaker will call, yeah? For example, like we have four table topic speaker, right? I know that you submit the report at the end of every speaker, but what I say, what I suggest you to make all of the audience more clear who is eligible or not eligible to be voted, you can deliver the recap, all the recap, all the for table topic speaker time report. Okay, and for the ah counter, you did great today. But maybe if you, in the next meeting, when you attend the meeting, to shorten the time, maybe you can just summarize. We have three speakers, we have three person who, who, who did the ah counter more than five time, blah, 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 blah. And then who, who mentioned two times ah and ahs, blah, 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 and clear, who is the person who clear ah of ah and ums like that. And ballot caster, yes, ballot casting so smooth. And the last four evaluators, what I love from the evaluators is you give a constructive feedback. You, you, you deliver the feedback that can help us, help the speakers to, to deliver a better speech in the future. And from what I like from all the other, evaluator, Jai Narayan is from your introduction with the speaker, I think that, I sense that you have a personal relationship, a good relationship with the speaker. So this is what I like from Toastmasters, everybody. We not, we here not just run a meeting, do these features, but amongst clubs, amongst area, among deficient, we also building the connection, we also building the relationship. Okay, I think that's all for my report today. I think I have consumed a lot of time. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And over to you, Toastmaster of the meeting, distinguished Toastmaster Miranda Romy.
Thank you. And thank goodness, my dogs have quieted, otherwise this would be very noisy. Thank you, Seni, for a very detailed report. Sorry, I still have so many ums, I need to cut that down. So thank you again. And okay, we're going to move on to our next, are we going to the Hall of Fame? Yeah, we'll do that. Let's do that first. And then I have a special segment that I would like to, to do after this. Let's sit down the Hall of Famers first. Are you ready for that?
Yes, we are. So this is the moment of truth. I'm going to, hold on, I'm going to share my screen. Yeah, so the winners are for the foot, the best evaluator. Congratulations to Jai Narayan.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Jai. And thank you, and congratulations, and congratulations to Magical Bali Toastmasters on your eleventh anniversary.
Thank you.
Good, Jai.
Alright, can I, sorry to interrupt, can I have Jai for a second?
Can I, can I just go for some makeup?
I'm gonna take pictures of you with, yeah, sure, you're right, I'm gonna.
Mascara and some lipstick.
Yeah, don't forget the plus on, okay? I'm gonna take the picture of you with your certificate in three, two, one. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so that's the best evaluator. And the next one is the best table topic. And I want, I want to have a drum roll. Yes. Congratulations to Toastmasters Hardif Singh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Give us your best pose. I'm gonna take picture of you in three, two, one. Thank you.
Okay, and the last one, we already know who the winner is. So for the best speaker, the winner is Amelia Dewey. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Amelia.
Alright, you ready, Amel? In one, two.
This is Korean style.
Three. Thank you.
Korean style is like this, I'm free.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, okay.
Alright, so that's.
Floor, Andre.
President. I think, I think we need to have a Korean.
I was just teasing Amelia.
Okay.
We can do that later. Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, those are the winners. Congratulations for the winners tonight. And now I would like to give the control back to the Toastmasters of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, President Batara Aj. So this is going to be a little extra. I wouldn't call it extraordinary. By the way, I was the one who said extraordinary, Harry. So extra, extraordinary. Yes, I would like, since this is our last meeting and also kind of like our birthday meeting, even though we will do the celebration on July third, and everybody is invited to come to Bali if they wish to attend our first hybrid meeting. So there will be great food, great cheer, great games, and awards, awards. Yeah. So this one, I would like to ask especially some guests who have been visiting us before, Lisa, Harry, and Puspita, we would like to have your impressions and inspirations and maybe wishes for Magical Bali going forward. Okay, let's start with Harry. Like one, one minute, Harry.
Thirty seconds. It's always been wonderful to come and visit your club simply because of the high standards of the use of English. It's very challenging to be the grammarian in your club because you really pushed the grammarian to it, to my, I feel it pushes me to my limits. And all I can say to you and to the president, more good years to come, more good years. And congratulations of this important master. Thank you, Miranda. Back to you.
You, and any suggestion, suggestion too, if you have any suggestion, how we can take it to the next level.
Well, if you want to take it to the next level, I can give you a three hour, two thousand, two duja juta rupiah lecture on it. But basically, you really have to start thinking about your hybrid and what technology you use, what is to use in your hybrid, because the profit benefit or be automatically looking at the offline, the online people and making it good for them, and then the offline to get it. Think about using triple cameras, three cameras, when you're doing a hybrid meeting. One camera you can call the Toastmaster view camera, so that people can watch you, the meeting. So not just set up one laptop and one camera, because that's not going to work for people who are either offline or online. You want to improve, really look and really delve into hybrid. Well, it's a hybrid environment. How do you make a hybrid environment engaging? And there are ways to do it. And I'll do it for you for free. Just come and call me. I love your club.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And actually, we forgot to mention, and Aj probably can share later. Aj is organizing a hybrid meeting training with Robin Chan, who is supposedly quite experienced and has done a lot of work to create good or quality hybrid meeting. But it would be great if you can jump in and, and share your knowledge. It's tomorrow evening. I don't know if you have time, but we would like to hear your two cents and add to that. And would be, you know, it would be recorded and it would help also other clubs to do the hybrid. So Aj can share. So Agi can share the information a little bit later on that. Okay, thank you, Harry. All right, now I would like to ask Jay. Is it your first time, Jay, to our meeting?
All right, now, Miranda, I'm not, I'm not sure age is not on my side. So if memory serves me right, this is the second time.
Yes, I think.
That's right.
I'm not too sure, though. I think second time, yes. So, yeah.
We had Jay before, yeah.
Okay, so what do you want from me, Miranda?
Impression, inspiration, words, and then suggestion to make.
Sure, I'll keep it short. And firstly, if this is your 11th anniversary, you're doing something right. All right, so that's going to be something that I got to take forward to encourage you guys to keep moving forward. I would suggest all of you focus not on milestones but on stepping stones. This is not a milestone meeting, it's a stepping stone meeting. Because a milestone only takes you forward, a stepping stone takes you higher. You need to keep going upwards, not forwards, right? So I thought that achievement is remarkable, admirable, and I applaud all of you for it. As for the, the meeting quality itself, I guess 26th of this month, Sunday, we'll tell you all.
Seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh Sunday, this, this coming Sunday. If you guys are participating, you will get to know exactly what you need to do to pull up your socks, tighten your belts, and really rock your role. So be there and we'll all have some fun. Back to you, Miranda.
Thank you. Somebody please write that down. What is it? Milestones move you forward and stepping stones takes you higher, something like that, right, Jay? And Jay, by the way, is the, the quote master. Yes, and, and we have Hard Dev, right? Hard Dev. Are you still there, Hard Dev? Or are you gone?
I'm here, I'm here.
Yes.
Okay. One, one minute.
Okay, one minute. All right, thanks you give me the time. That is the most difficult thing in Toastmasters, to keep the time. Okay, your club is an excellent. I wish to come back again. And I find that people are very interactive and the things are being shared. And even you guys have very foresighted, like you're coming up with this project of role playing and all. This is indirectly going to benefit your club. And you will create more people to have role players. That is where your club will grow. The idea of Toastmasters is for us to grow, and you guys are growing well. True, like I will agree with Jay says, don't count how long you have been, how high you have gone. You may be 11 years. I have a club in Malacca who is 35 years. But clubs which are five years behind them are equally far or even ahead of them. Because when you count time, you become dinosaur. So you, stones, you go higher, your view become bigger. So it's a very good thing, Mr. Jay, give it up. And back to you, Miranda.
Thank you so much, Hard Dev. Look forward to having you with us again. Thank you. And Lisa, can we ask for your input? Your impression, inspirational, and maybe some suggestions?
Yes, okay, thank you, Miranda. This is the second time I visited Magical Bali. And both times I have a very good experience. I, I like this club because I think there's a lot of positive energy in the meeting. Everyone's very energetic and dynamic. And I think the quality of all the, the role players is, is high. Everyone seems to know their roles very well. You know, it's like everything is very smooth, you know. You're all like going like clockwork. And clearly, I think you, you put in a lot of work into meeting. Because I don't believe a meeting can go this smoothly without preparation and hard work. So well done to the role players and, and members of, of Bali Toastmasters Club. I think you can definitely carry on for the next 11 years and reach even higher. And, and you're gonna be the benchmark club for District of D7. I think it's very well deserved. So I like coming back. I, I like coming here. I think I have learned a lot from you guys. Here's some of the good practices that you have. So I hope to be able to bring some of this back to my club. And we can learn from you. Yeah, so thank you for having me.
Thank you, Lisa. I mean, it's, you know, us being members, it's hard to see ourselves. So it takes people from the outside to see us. And sometimes, you know, we have very critical eyes. And I still think we can do much better. But, but you know, to be able to see that and see the, yeah, and, and thank you. I mean, I think all members, we can pat ourselves on the back. And, and a lot of hard work, that's true, you know, like I would just like to comment on this because Melita is the one who's big on training, training new members. So everyone who's doing their role for the first time are being trained by Melita. And I think Amel also helps and Ig also helps. So every new members are being on boarded. So, so I think all those things add up and, and they take time to do that. And, and they take their, their special or, you know, extra time, meet with the new member, onboard them. So Ig was the president and even before that Ig was BPE and Melita was BPM. So great job and we can continue on this tradition. There's something excellent that we've done as Exco. So thank you. Wow. Okay, so well, we can ask from maybe, well, like Diane first, because Diane is, is like a long-lost member. Would you like to comment to Diane? And then we ask some members also, we go around, ask members.
Oh, wow, for my side, I think whenever I come to Magical Bali Toastmasters, there are always a new improvement, new, new things to learn, new member, new face, and Magical Bali, like, hmm, always grow. And I, you know, there are a lot of variety I see in Magical Bali, yeah. And yeah, congratulations for all Exco. And you were surprised, almost all Exco was women. Yeah, all.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I didn't even notice yet. Thank you, Diane. And I think, you know, I agree with that. I think one thing in Toastmaster, Magical Bali Toastmasters is we don't want to be complacent. So whenever it starts to be complacent, it's like, okay, let's do something and get moving. And so I think we all did a great job. And yeah, thank you. So now let's ask the members first before we go to the, the guests. And where do we start? Let's start with the longest one here, which is Agi. Because you've been, actually, no, Amel, Amel first. Amel, is Amel still there? Amel's been the oldest, yeah, I think the oldest members among us here, other than me, then we can. Amel, do you want to comment on our 11th birthday and how the club is now? You've seen the club for three years, I think.
Yes, thank you so much. I, I already joined for three years. And I, I think I really have many progress in public speaking after I joined the Toastmasters. Yeah, and for now, I try to serve for the leadership thing also. Yeah, hopefully I could improve more again in the future. Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you. That's something that I also love in Toastmasters, in Magical Bali. We see the, the development of new leaders constantly. And that's something that I think we can be very proud of. Yes, let me ask Andre. Andre's been a longtime member also, three years, and, and a returning member.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Toastmaster of the meeting. I am truly grateful for being part of Magical Bali Toastmasters, even though I was inactive for two years. And with this online meeting, even though I'm now in my home island, Zumba, or in other islands here. But it's, it's always amazing, yeah. I just flew out from Phuket this afternoon. I was tired, but seeing the energy of everyone, all the role takers and the guests coming to this meeting, it's always something that can like eliminate all the burdens, all the tiredness that I had. And it's, it's really good. So if you've seen guests, that Magical Bali Toastmasters online meeting is full of fun, full of lots of great things. Trust me, the face-to-face meetings or hybrid would be even, even nicer. So looking forward to seeing you. And all the best for the new Exco members and for Magical Bali Toastmasters Club. Thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Andre. I so agree with you that no matter how tired you are, when you come to a good Toastmasters meeting, you'll be revived. And you have this, yeah, like a surge of new energy. So thank you for reminding us about that. Now I'd like to ask Melita, sorry, Sammy first, Sammy first. Is that Sammy between Sammy, Mira, and, yeah, you want to make some comment, you know, like, share your thoughts?
Yeah, I've been a member in Magical since October 2019, I guess. Yeah, yeah. So it's a surprise story. So before I flew to Bali, I was a member in Titanium Toastmasters Cup in Madan. Then I talked to my fellow, fellow friends. Guys, I, I'd like to move to Bali in the next couple months. Can you recommend me a club there? Then the director, the director of District 7, Liana Kwan, she said, oh, I know, I know a club for you, honey. You can go to Magical Bali. So she sent me the Natalie contact. So I contacted Natalie. And then when I, the first time I attend Magical physical meeting, I was surprised. How the president, that was the IPP Prana, he doesn't wear any shoes or stand up. Oh, wow! What a different vibe from Madan. You know, in Madan, we wear suit, you know, like, very formal suit, office suit, you know. But when I flew to Bali and attend Magical Bali, oh, wow, I was shocked and I felt like.
Welcome to Bali.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's, he's so casual, but the Toastmaster vibe, still there, you know. The, the speaking was very professional, the, the roles of the introduction. Also, the, I mean, the technical thing when they're run the regular meeting and also the contest. It's also follow the TI quality. Wow, it was like, I, I was experiencing two different world, you know, from Madan to Bali. Oh, okay. But then it's not to compare from the first club to second club, okay? Titanium was my first home club and now Magical was my second home club. But I think the way that all of the role takers and also the members and also the Exco, they, they really put the duty and due from their heart. So I, I, I really learned how to really commit. When I say yes to the Exco, when I say yes to the membership, I, I put my integrity and just do it. Not only, oh, yeah, okay, I pay. And then, yeah, okay lah, just put the name right there. But yeah, I saw the commitment and so the integrity, all the members and even the founder, member Miranda also encouraged us. And there are a few times that she, she, she went to Madan and said, honey, don't hesitate to question me, okay, if you, if you have any question from Miranda also, from Natalie as well. It's a, it's a great experience, really. Great experience. And wow, it's a, it's, it's building my personal growth. Especially in the commitment. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. What kind of, that's like a testimony. Thank you, thank you. Yes, okay, let's go to Wira. Wira is, I think, an older member than Sammy or been member for longer.
I think Sammy has more experience in Toastmasters, right, before she joined in Madan. I, I started joining Toastmasters in 2018, so it's been two and a half years. So yeah, I really, what is that? It's, it's such an honor to be part of Magical Bali Toastmasters. I met many incredible people, very open-minded people. It seems like I opening myself from a very comfort shell because I used to be, to be, what is it, enjoying myself alone. But when I joined Toastmasters, I started to open myself and then start to learn how to communicate well with others and then improving my public speaking. So I can see myself. If I compare myself from the beginning, when I just started joining Toastmasters, I feel there's a lot of improvement. And, and I think some of the members also said the same thing. So I feel like, okay, wow, this is really, really worth it. So I will always try myself to say yes for any opportunity because I think by taking that opportunity, that gives me more chance to keep improving myself. So I'm very happy. Thank you very much, Magical Bali Toastmasters. Thank you, Miranda.
Okay, thank you, Wira. All right, well, we have just a few. We'll go a little bit faster. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I guess it's Melita, Melita's turn. So would you like to say something?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm gonna spotlight myself first. Well, join, joining MBTC for almost one and a half year, I guess, almost two years. And I, I really happy because I can see members improving a lot. And I'm so happy if I can see my friends, in this case, members, is also improving. Means that we are growing together, we are learning together. And MBTC is kind of like a family for me because I'm originally come from Bali. I just, I just work in Bali and I found a family. And Magical Bali is kind of like playground for me and magically heal me as a person. So when I got any confused or feeling bad, feeling sad, just jumping into our club and then going back home happy. So thank you so much for having me, for trusting me as BPM PPE. And now I'm gonna be the next president. So thank you so much. And I love working with all of you. Back to you, Miranda. Thanks to you as well. So you, you talk.
Thank you, thank you.
President.
Yeah. President Mel. All right, so let's go to Good Day. I think Good Day first before John, right? Good Day. Actually, John, okay, let me go with John because John came to visit a long time ago. And he was considering joining, but he didn't actually officially join until much later. So John, so share with us your thoughts and what made you, yeah, just share up some thoughts. Let's, let's make it a little bit briefer, one minute, please.
Okay, actually, if I tell all the story about Toastmasters to myself, I think it's, it will great if I make a book. Yeah, because Toastmasters is one of the support me inside. Because, yeah, from Pekan Baru Toastmasters, I, I, I I saw Toastmasters for the first time in Pekan Baru. And I know people on, in Toastmasters, I've, all of them supportive. I speak for a few moments and I, I made a lot of mistakes of my speech and they were clapping. I was confused at that. Why don't, why don't they believe me? They, they support me. That's why I, I feel like this the, the, the good platform to, to grow, to yeah, I moved to Magic, to Bali and I, I was looking for Toastmasters and I met Magical Bali Toastmasters the first time and I met Miranda and, yeah, until now. I'm, I feel good in Toastmasters. Yeah.
I feel good.
Girl, I feel good. Happy anniversary, Magical Bali Toastmasters.
Thank you, John. Okay, let's go to Good Day. Good day, Upek.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you, Madam Miranda. So I have been, I have been in Toastmasters less than one years, but I really enjoy. So I have been, uh, I have been in Toastmaster less than one years, but I really enjoy, it's good. I think uh, I'm grateful I decided to join Toastmaster, especially Magical Bali Toastmaster. It's a good place for me to improve. I feel uh, I get the improvement. I feel everyone's, all the members, my pilot Toastmasters support me. Uh, guide me, uh, yeah, many times. They're really humble uh, persons and also feel like family. I agree, uh, I agree with uh, Melita that, yeah, everyone's like family and grow and learn together, I feel. I, I feel that one. And also, yeah, I get the value and I feel since I joined Toastmaster. I brings and contributes to my teams regarding, regarding public speaking. Um, and then uh, yeah, communications and leadership because I, I. Uh, lead teams in my office. I also uh, very interested and excited to encourage, to keep uh, encouraging my team to join. Uh, Toastmaster in Bali because I believe by encouraging my team and if they want to join Toastmaster, it will be easier for me to lead them. Yeah, because that's a truth. There, there are uh, around eighty peoples uh, in my uh, office, yeah. All of them is young people. So that's why I, I keep encouraging. Most of the times when I get the meetings. I always share what I get from the meeting experience and it's look like some people interested. That's why I'll uh, in the last meeting, I asked once of my team. And yeah, I, I, I feel they uh, good, uh, something's good and they share to our teams. Yeah, um, I really uh, excited and interested to keep continuing to be a member of uh, Magical Bali Toastmaster. Because I feel uh, yeah, improvement since I joined the uh, Magical Bali Toastmaster. I realized that uh, during less than one years, uh, I'm not really uh, hundred percent on Bali Toastmaster. Because still has another focus for lecture and also in another things. But I'm willing to be more serious and more hundred, be hundred percent and maybe will be interested to join as Exco for. Uh, elections. I hope, I hope, I, I hope I get, I will get the opportunity for the next uh, Exco election. But thank you, uh, IG, Mr. President, for offering me, but I'm sorry, I cannot do it for now, but I, I will. I will answer that. I will join uh, Exco Committee for uh, next election if I have the opportunity. Thank you very much, uh, Madame Miranda.
Thank you, Good Day. And I do see the improvement. Wow, it's a, yeah, it's, it's quite a lot and quite immense. And I'm looking forward to meeting you in person. You're one of the people I think that I haven't met in person yet.
Yes, sure. Yeah, I stay around nearby center if you are in center. And get there for president.
But come to the hybrid meeting on, on the third, July third.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so thank you with that. And then I'm going to give it to our president as the last person to speak. And then you can also talk to Chitra after that. So to you, IG.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Toastmasters of the meeting. Well, even though many, many already left. Um, but yeah, uh, thank you so much for coming and uh, especially to the role takers. And thank you for uh, making uh, today's meeting great. I'm actually really touched with the. Uh, impressions from the, from the guests and to also listen um, from you guys and it's been. Touching. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just happy and feel really, really good about this meeting. And also congratulations to the new Excos. I believe that this club will, this club growth are in good hands. So I'm always there to help, of course, uh, and everybody's available to help. So no worries at all. We're grown together. And with this, I think I would like to, oh, I want to hear from Chitra because Chitra's been staying. And Chitra, uh, can you give us some feedback about this meeting? By the way, is this your first time, right?
I'm joining the MBTC Magical Toastmaster. Yes, this is the first time. But I happen to join several other clubs in Tangu, I joined and then also in Tokomono. Because um, the idea is because in my hotel, I work for Marriott International in Good Southend. We are doing a collaboration between uh, Toastmaster and Marriott. That's why as a champion, as a representative of the hotel, I'm actually assigned to observe and to learn from the club. So that the expectation that I can roll out the session later on for, for my uh, employees in the hotels. So so far the meeting here, I enjoy so much because in each club of the Toastmaster. They are creating a safe environment, the supportive environment for us to make mistakes and to learn from the mistakes and which is, which is good. And also, um, uh, what else? The people are so warm. I see uh, um, some of you are chatting me, welcoming me. I feel very welcome. So actually, I'm seeking to be a member of the Toastmaster. That's why I'm also experiencing, observing and to choose which club later on.
Yes, MBTC.
Beautiful, yeah. You, you, you know, if you just observe as guests, you're not going to get the essence of it fully. You only get that when you're a member. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that you are thinking about joining. Because, because being a guest is, is totally different, right? You just see the, the skin of it, you know, the surface. But once you get in, then, yeah, so much, you know, like I mean, you can hear every of the members, like you know, Good Day said. His leadership change and um, that wouldn't come with the, just observing. And I was the one who started the contact with uh, John Woolley. And then that's how, how it, yeah, by John, by John from, yeah, I can remember. Yeah, Marriott's from the, that's the first one. And then, you know, he came and we keep in contact and then he continued on with the. But it does, yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or the other one. Okay, well, I hope you will join. I mean, we're all, we're already chatting on the side. This is, this is somebody who's gonna be a great member for Magical Bali.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, yes. Looking for, looking forward to hearing you become a member, well, in any club, but I hope you can do. Magical Bali. All right, thank you for sharing your feedback, Chitra. And I think since we already uh, go over time. Yeah, uh, well, I would, I would like to just adjourn this meeting. And of course, everybody, if you want uh, to stay and have chit chat or more chit chat, you're welcome. And if you need to leave, you are also uh, welcome. And again, thank, thank you and good luck for the new Excos. Toast.
Yeah, thank you. Well, anyone who was still want to say or have questions, you can stay on. And um, okay, IG, if you want to go, I think we can close the recording now, right?
Thank you, thank you very much.